Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, April 6, 2015. I'd ask that you all please rise for be found by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are ever mindful of the many blessings and opportunities that have been showered upon Batavia. We are thankful for all the good community interactions that we have going with our various governments. And we're just thankful for the various support and good people that we have so willing to step forward in service, as is obvious by the elections that we are going to have in the community tomorrow, that we have such an array of highly talented individuals who are willing to step forward and serve their communities in a very critical time in our history. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and all those from our country who are serving with them in the defense of our liberties. Tonight, we also ask for guidance and direction and understanding as we enact and vote on the various issues before us on our agenda, knowing that each and every member of the council is here tonight to do what in their hearts and minds was in the best interest of our community. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman, Clark, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty just as it is for all.
Senator Clark, to please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Alderman Stark is absent. Chansett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Homan.
Here.
Sam.
Here.
Bodderman.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that thirteen of the fourteen elected Aldermen are present and accounted for this evening's meetings. We obviously have the necessary form to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added or changed on the agenda, and who's gonna handle, Alderman, who's handling this?
Yes.
Alderman McFadden, are you gonna handle that?
I'm gonna, I'll take care of that, sure. Item O on the consent agenda will be removed. That ordinance is not ready for us yet. And executive session tonight, we have nothing, so item twenty-one can be removed as well. Make a motion that we accept the...
Agenda is amended.
The agenda as amended.
Second. Moved by Alderman McFadden, Second Alderman Chansett, for the approval of the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Bodderman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Thirteen yes, no-no's, one absent. Moving then to item number five, and who's gonna do this one? Alderman McFadden again, in the absence of Alderman Stark. Thank you.
Yes. Consent agenda, except and place on file, A, committee of the whole minutes for January thirteenth, January twenty-seventh, February tenth, February seventeenth, and February twenty-fourth of 2015; B, historic preservation commission minutes for February ninth, 2015; C, the November financials; and D, the December financials. Approvals, item E, the March twenty-seventh, 2015 payroll in the amount of $730,555.52; item F, accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,943,290.84; G, city council minutes for March second, 2015; H, resolution fifteen thirty-seven R, declaring two trucks as surplus property; I, resolution fifteen dash forty-one R, services for phase two of asset and infrastructure software implementation with the Rooker Milky; resolution fifteen forty-two R, downtown improvement grant for Darren Anger, 310 East Wilson Street; item K, resolution fifteen forty-five R, declaring two vehicles surplus property; resolution fifteen forty-three R, authorizing the execution of the local agency, amendment one for federal participation for the Wilson Street streetscape and traffic signal modernization interconnect for the Batavia Avenue to Island/Shumway Avenue with the Illinois Department of Transportation; item M, resolution fifteen forty-four R, authorizing the execution of the local agency agreement for federal participation for the safe roads to school crosswalk improvements at Hart Road, Redant Road, and Larkspur Lane, and Wagner Road at the Illinois Prairie Path, project for construction engineering with the Illinois Department of Transportation; item N, resolution fifteen thirty-eight R, a resolution expressing official intent regarding certain expenditures to be reimbursed from the special tax allocation fund for and/or from proceeds of an obligation issued, if any, in connection with a proposed tax increment financing district, commonly described as West Town Redevelopment Project; item P, resolution fifteen thirty-nine R, authorizing the sale of municipally-owned real estate in the seventeen-hundred block of Hubbard Avenue; item Q, ordinance fifteen eleven R, amending the official zoning map; resolution fifteen forty-six R, authorizing the approval of supplement number two with Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for final engineering of Houston Street for the amount not to exceed $31,900; resolution fifteen forty-seven R, authorizing execution of a contract for the 2015 sidewalk and curb replacement program with Strata Construction for $125,000; item T, resolution fifteen forty-eight R, authorization to purchase one 2015 Ford F-150 supercab four-by-four truck from Wright Automotive for $24,754; item U, resolution of a power sales agreement with Rubicon Technology, Inc. for the calendar year of 2016 with an amount of no less than $1,400,000; item V, resolution fifteen fifty R, third amendment to the Batavia Enterprises/Walgreens redevelopment agreement. I move, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved by Alderman McFadden, Second Alderman Chansett, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Bodderman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Motion for the approval of the consent agenda is thirteen yes, no-no's, one absent. Okay, the next one is the annual proclamation for Loyalty Day Parade. And did anybody was given this? Do you have that, Alderman McFadden?
Yeah. Proclamation for the Loyalty Day Parade. Whereas, the community of Batavia is honored and blessed to once more host the annual Loyalty Day Parade, which has been sponsored by the Batavia Veterans of Foreign Wars Post Number 1197 and its ladies and men's auxiliaries for over four decades of civic life; and whereas, the event serves to annually instill and reinforce the longstanding community commitment towards patriotism, volunteerism, and the vibrancy of the American spirit; and whereas, the members of the Batavia VFW Post 1197 and its ladies and men's auxiliaries annually donated thousands of hours and thousands of dollars to plan, organize, and produce the Loyalty Day Parade, which has won the hearts and admiration of residents from throughout the greater Fox River Valley and beyond; and whereas, the VFW Post 1197 has utilized the theme of Loyalty Day Parade to promote a variety of community concerns and causes, including drug awareness, stranger danger, public safety, religious understanding, business development, public action, and American patriotism; and whereas, the annual Loyalty Day Parade has become a civic highlight and has written for itself a proud chapter of Batavia history that serves to remind and enlighten all citizens as to the need to illustrate our love of freedom, support for our nation and its institutions, and commitment to the values which surround the American dream. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shulkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia of Illinois, with approval by a vote of the city council, do hereby proclaim that Sunday, May third, 2015 shall be known throughout all of Batavia as Loyalty Day. And by the signing of this proclamation, I do hereby encourage all residents of our town to attend and participate in the festivities and significance of this most meaningful community event. Make a motion that we accept the proclamation honoring Loyalty Day as presented.
Second. Moved by Alderman, Ms. McFadden, Second Alderman Fisher, for the approval of the proclamation for Loyalty Day. Kirk, call the roll.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Bodderman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Motion unanimously approved. Thirteen yes, no-no's, one absent. We're honored to have David Stokes, who is here tonight to represent the Batavia VFW. And David, on behalf of the city council, I present to you the proclamation.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for all the good work that the VFW does, not only on Loyalty Day, but every day in our community to...
Thank you.
...help keep alive the virtues and the patriotism of our country, so...
(coughing) Excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Want to make any comments?
Thank you for the forty-first opportunity to support the city of Batavia and the community. The VFW looks forward to everybody being there and continuing our support. Thank you very much for your time and your support.
Thank you.
Well, I know everybody's attending this Saturday spaghetti dinner, five to nine. Yvonne's got tickets, eight dollars in advance, ten at the door. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number seven is the appointment of Mr. Rahat Bari to the position of city engineer. You've all had the opportunity to basically meet him and interview him, and we got no concerns after that exercise, so I'd entertain a motion for my appointment of him as appointment to city engineer.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, Second Alderman Chansett. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Bodderman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thirteen yes, no-no's, one absent. Let me just say, I'm very excited and pleased to have somebody of his qualifications and background step forward and apply for and be interviewed and accepted for the position of city engineer. We have, I'll describe it as we've been able to lure him away from the city of Naperville, where he's held a similar position. He hasn't been the full city engineer there, but he's been one of the senior members of the staff, and comes highly recommended by Naperville, and certainly comes with a wealth of municipal experience, which I think is very key in this particular job at this point in time. So thank the council for your endorsement and your participation in the review process. Okay, moving then to item number eight, which is presentation of Child Abuse Awareness Month. And I understand we have some representatives from CASA here.
Hi, I'm Lori Hewitt. I'm the Director of Development for CASA King County. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. April is a very special month. It's the month that honors National Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. Thank you very much for your approval to put blue ribbons, not Geneva, because we got a lot of calls when we were putting those up, down Wilson from twenty-five to thirty-one. The blue ribbon signifies awareness about child abuse prevention. CASA King County is a nonprofit volunteer organization. We work with all the kids that unfortunately are taken away from their parents for abuse and neglect and put into foster care. Excuse me. We're in the courthouse on Third Street, Historic Courthouse, and last year, we served five hundred and eighty-seven children in King County, and we did that with two hundred and eighty-one active CASA volunteers. CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. The volunteers go through forty hours of training, then they're sworn in by a judge, and they actually work with the children on a legal side. They're the legal advocates, and they make sure that the kids don't fall through the cracks and that while, while they're in the foster care system, that they receive the services they should. So I did, wanted to invite you all this Thursday, and I'll leave some flyers, is a small ceremony we do at noon in the courthouse in the rotunda. And it's just to kind of let people know about our mission, which is the reason for the blue ribbons. And also, we do a small ceremony. We're swearing in our next class of twenty-one CASAs. We're serving lunch, so that usually gets a lot of people. But we're also, we also take a moment of silence, and we recognize the children who lost their life last year in Illinois due to child abuse. So I just wanted to thank you so much for having me here and give you a little bit of background, and then also have me tell you about an event we're working on together.
Randy Banker here, from the city of Batavia. For some of the Aldermen that don't know, we used to have a Books vs. Badges event, which is a basketball fundraiser where police and fireplace teachers from the school district, we used to raise money for the fireworks, but the fireworks has gone in a different direction for donations. So the Books vs. Badges sort of disappeared. And what came out of that is I received a lot of Facebook comments from citizens, mainly students, past and present, from the high school, from the grade schools. They really missed it. And so what we were trying to do, I was trying to come up with an idea that would affect kids, because I think it's quite important. So a few of my friends are CASA advocates, and I was asked to do that, but I don't have that patience to do that job. So I tried to come up with a better way of doing that, so I came up with fundraising. So what we're gonna end up doing is, we're gonna do Books vs. Badges, same principle, but it's gonna be for CASA and the April month for child abuse, and the money's gonna go all to CASA. So the game will be Saturday, April twenty-fifth, at the high school at six o'clock. I sent a poster to the mayor and the city administrator, police chief, and fire chief today. If you need them, we can send them to all the council. I have an example here. I believe we're gonna put it on the city website. And just, just a great time, a lot of fun, a lot of activity. This time, it's not just gonna be for Batavia, it'll be for the whole county. So you'll start seeing some press releases on that, right, Eric?
Yes.
Thank you. So we've already done some press releases, but it'll be coming out. It's a great, great organization. If you don't know anything about it, try to become an advocate or be a part of it. I was surprised on how many kids in King County need this help. So is there any questions?
Is that timed right?
It will be six o'clock at the high school, Batavia High School, on April twenty-fifth.
Thanks.
All right. Hope you can be there. Thank you for your assistance.
Thank you. All right, the next thing is, I'd ask the police chief if he would come up, and he's going to oversee the presentation of a check from the city of Batavia to the post-prom party, and he'll tell you all about it.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. As is customary, it gives me great pleasure to present this check in the amount of $3,000 to the post-prom committee. I applaud the committee for having the activity after the prom that, you know, that keep the students away from getting into trouble or, you know, going in the direction of alcohol. And I know they've been doing it very successfully a number of years because of sponsorships throughout the community, and it's our pleasure, on behalf of the city of Batavia, to present this $3,000 check. And Mayor, maybe you want to talk about where this money came from?
Why don't you tell us?
As the mayor and council have committed to, through a number of years, unfortunately, when we have violations of the liquor code or the tobacco code, the money goes into a special fund. And I know in years past, because everybody complied, we didn't have any money. We had to find some other sources for the money to give you a donation. But I guess the good news is there were violators. So the bad news, there were violators. You know, but anyway, you have this $3,000 check, and it's my pleasure to present to you.
Thank you so much.
I'm Amy Nelson. I'm a parent from Batavia High School. And Kathy Dremel also is a parent. And we are the chairs, along with Tina Blakely, for the post-prom this year. We also chaired it last year. So we just want to say thank you for your generous donation, because it's a great event. We've been doing it for over thirty years now, and we had a record number of kids come last year. So we're looking forward to doing it again this year, May ninth, from eleven-thirty till three in the morning at Funway. So...
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Certainly, on behalf of the community, I want to thank you two as the chairman of this, because this is a yeoman's job, trying to put all this together and acquire all the things you need to do to attract people to come. But I really, as the chief just said, I think this is a most worthwhile, you know, endeavor, and one that kind of fits the mold of what the city council had in mind when they made the decision many, many years ago to put the liquor fines and the tobacco fines in a special fund that specifically is supposed to be used for activities and education that advance, you know, deterrence of alcohol use amongst young people. And so appreciate your good efforts and what you do, because I'm sure by three-thirty in the morning, everybody's pretty tired and ready to go home.
That is true.
So thank you for all you're doing, and best wishes, and hopefully, this will be something the city can keep up for many years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Although, one small confession, I think that Amy and Tina and I had almost as much fun as the kids last year.
Yeah.
So it's a really good event, and we couldn't do it without all the partners from the city. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, then the next big event is item number ten, which is gonna be a presentation tonight from Randy Simonian on the Kick Scooter Parade event. Randy?
Pink and Water of Marty Kelly. Yeah, you're gonna get me for that one. Hi, everyone, how you doing?
Good.
So, April twenty-fifth, it's two weeks from Saturday, we're hoping to break a world record for the world's longest kick scooter parade. Non-motorized scooters. The current record, as we talked about before, is four hundred and eighty-nine. It was held in, still held in New Zealand, 2013, and we obviously need four hundred and ninety. I was pretty ambitious saying a thousand. I'm hoping we get to that number, but really, more importantly, I'm hoping we get to four hundred and ninety. So we're needing everyone's help. The website is worldrecordbatavia.com. We have a Facebook page and lots of other communications. You'll start seeing posters like this throughout town. But worldrecordbatavia.com is where we need you to go. It's five dollars to sign up per person, ages ten and older, and that money is gonna be donated to Chip in Batavia and Batavia United Way, two great, great organizations. Ten o'clock in the morning. Questions?
Where's that?
It's downtown Batavia. Right here, it's gonna start. Good quest, very good. That's, I guess that's important, isn't it? Right here at the red caboose, it's gonna start. To break the world record, each scooter has to travel two miles. So basically, it's gonna start at the red caboose, it's gonna head north along the bike path, just beyond Fabian, there's a turnaround by the boat ramp. That's just a little over a mile. So it works out perfect that we go down, we loop back around, and then come back down to the bike path, and our start and our finish line will be at the same place. And we also have something really fun, too. It's, we're kind of, Sky High Scooters is a kind of a high-end scooter company, and they're helping us sponsor this. And the day of, we're gonna have Houston Street closed off, they're gonna bring their professional stunt team. So we're gonna cordon off an area, there's gonna be ramps and pipes and stairs, and they're gonna do all kinds of fun and exciting things for the kids. And if you go to skyhighscooters.com and watch some of their videos, that in itself will be a show. I will stay away from doing any stunts, even though I have a pink scooter. Questions, anything else?
I've already been recruited by Randy to be one of his volunteers to help with this, so I gotta ask, are any of the rest of you thinking about going into the scooter parade?
Kids are, work for kids are out of town.
And Mayor, that's an excellent point. This is not just for kids. I mean, if you can travel for two miles on a scooter, you know, that's why we had to limit the age. It kind of breaks my heart that we had to cut it off at ten, because I know there's a lot of younger kids with scooters. But first and foremost, we have to break a record. There's no goofing around. We have to stay in line. You know, there's lots of things. It's a seventeen-page application from Guinness that I have to abide by, including official counters and video, and we're gonna have a drone that's gonna be taking high-end video shots from above, which is also required by Guinness. So there's lots of things that are gonna be happening. It sounds simple to just break a record with four hundred and ninety people. Man, there's a lot that goes into it, I promise you. Yes, Dave?
Okay, so if it's gonna be at ten o'clock, Randy, do you recommend that people get here at nine-thirty, quarter after nine, or anything? What time will the professionals do their thing?
Yep, great question, yeah. The event really starts at eight o'clock, because from eight till ten is gonna be pre-registration. You'll sign up online, it's five dollars per person, bring a printed receipt with you, or we'll have your name if you forget the receipt. You'll receive a blue wristband or a yellow wristband that day. And the race or the parade itself, don't race. Race, race. The parade will start at ten o'clock, and we anticipate it'll be probably about a half an hour or so-ish. The line itself, we anticipate, if we got a thousand scooters, five feet per, you know, scooter in space, that would be a mile-long people, chain of scooters. So from the start, we literally have people from the red caboose all the way down to the boat ramp in one single line, then they'll hairpin back and come back again. So it should be pretty cool. And I'm hoping and praying that the weather's not really warm, so the trees don't bud, and we can get some good drone footage from ahead, because, from overhead, because if the trees bud out and we can't get it, eh, I think it'd be really fun to have it. So we'll see how that goes.
Are you north of the Fabian Bridge with the boat ramp?
Yes, yes, it's just on the other side, Mayor. It's in the park a lot there by the Chinese Garden and stuff. Yeah, so it's just over a mile. When you loop around and then come back, it'll be a total of two-plus miles.
Can you even get to share in this with us?
We do touch...
We're in Geneva, then we turn around and come back.
We do, right. We just, we just, we just gently touch Geneva, and then we go back to Batavia. But the start and finish is in Batavia.
So, Your Honor, I was gonna take him up on his offer of trying out one of his scooters, but he said he needed another counter, so I volunteered to be a counter, so that means all you guys get to take the scooters now.
But you don't know how to count.
Oh, I do know how to count. Much better than I know how to...
Count, pink scooter, count, pink scooter. It really should be a fun event. We want everyone, I mean, sooner than later, this just kicked off about, just over a week ago, we started signing up. So it's brand new to, you know, it's been planned for a long time, but we only have two and a half weeks left. I mean, literally, tonight, I want everyone who's interested, BATV, Batavia, Geneva, Aurora, St. Charles, all of our friends, sign up tonight. Let's get the ball rolling. It's gonna be kicked off with all the schools. The posters are in the schools as of this week, and it'll be in backpack mail on Thursday to eleven thousand people. So the next couple of weeks is gonna be pretty exciting, but we want you to sign up ahead of time online. And, oh, here's something that's really kind of fun. Just, this was perfect timing. Anyone who signs up between now and April eighteenth, which is not this Saturday, but next Saturday, their name gets thrown in the pot to be the person that is on the first scooter. So that should be kind of cool. So sign up now, sign up quickly, get your friends going, and mom and dad and grandma and grandpa, as long as you can kick a scooter for, you know, thirty minutes or so, we'd love to have you. We really would love to have you. Be a fun event.
I mean, I'm struck by the historical impacts of this, because I'm sure we'll have some BATV filmage and whatever on this, and the library and the museum can put it in the archives, and a hundred years from now, somebody will probably get out and have a big chuckle at this whole experience. But it'll be good to see the dress that we now have and how people are.
Sure.
And I appreciate kind of the historical moment that you're creating here, because some of the more valuable films that we have in the archives are some of the old stuff from when they had the city's centennial celebration in nineteen thirty-three and times like that. So this is kind of one of those special moments that I really would encourage Batavians to latch on to, because I don't know if we've ever done, tried to do a Guinness Book of World Records here before. You've talked about it, and we've had a couple of ideas, but we've never put it in play, and now we're gonna do this. So I really want to, hopefully, the community will jump behind this. And it seems like a real safe way to do this, and we're not on crossing a bunch of streets and we have to worry about people, cars, and whatever. We've kind of designed it so we're kind of totally clear of traffic, so to speak. It's a very scenic route, and hopefully, the biggest thing is that the weather cooperates with us on that.
Right, and it is a rain or shine event. I mean, short of severe weather, which we would obviously have to cancel, it's a no refund policy. It's only five bucks. It's all right. It's going to a good cause, but we're hoping for decent weather that day. I have a pretty good track record of Randy events and good weather happening. Yeah, we hear the lightning now, but we're hoping for good weather. And to your point, Mayor Jeff... And to your point, Mayor Jeff, you know, again, maybe a little optimistic, but first we have to break this world record, but if we do, why can't we do a different world record every year, something fun and different and put us on the map? And I can see the sign as we're driving from Geneva into Batavia, not only the football champions, but the world record champions too. So, we'll see how that goes. But we love everyone to join us, it's gonna be a lot of fun, even if you can't scoot, come down with your kids, it'll be really fun and again, praying for a great day. Keep an eye out for these posters, you'll see them. Worldrecordbatavia.com. Be there or be square. That's it, any final questions?
Any final questions?
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you for your leadership in putting this together.
Indeed. I'm scooting out of here.
Bye-bye. Okay, moving to eleven, do we have any matters from the public for items not on the agenda tonight? All right, all right, some more, I'll describe this as a good news night. We're gonna have a presentation by Holly Dykman from the Chamber, is gonna do some introductions about the plans of Party Light Worldwide in Batavia, and I'm very excited about this. And as she's walking up here, I want to publicly thank Holly and the other members of the Chamber for their hard work and involvement in what she's about to tell you of and also pay some appreciation to our city staff. Bill McGrath and his crew really worked very diligently on this for some time and I'm very pleased to introduce Holly tonight with what she wants to do.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna use my usual, do my usual tap dance and tell you about all the events we have and then we'll get to the really good news. We have our educational seminar series, which will be continuing this month on April ninth, from four to six P.M. We're in the leadership track now, anyone can come. We have instructor Evelyn Cannibal coming from Wobonzi to teach us about how to be an effective leader. Then on April fourteenth, we have Batavia Women in Business Luncheon. We'll have four successful businesswomen that have built businesses from the ground up. Then on April fifteenth, we have Networking It. April twenty-second, our third annual Spring Into Action Multi-Chamber Progressive Luncheon, where you can go and mingle and learn and network from about twenty-one other different Chamber members during a progressive luncheon. We usually have over a hundred attendees at these events. And then, we are partnering with Batavia Main Street on April thirtieth for Ladies Night Out. It's kind of a retail madness event. So, you can grab a passport and travel around Batavia to experience the array of retail establishments waiting to serve you. Discounts and prizes available. For more information on that event specifically and how to find and purchase your passport At the Chamber, we not only have events and educational seminars, we also put together, one of the greatest things about a Chamber is relationship development. And we have several forums or mastermind groups that get together either on a monthly or weekly basis to try to further each other, whether that be through brainstorming on issues or successes that they are dealing with. One of them that has been, you know, built from the ground up just in the last couple of years is our Industrial Site Managers Forum. It's one of the most powerful groups in the fact that they employ the most people and even though it's a small group, they employ more people than the rest of our Chamber members combined. They get together once a month and about two months ago, we asked the Mayor and Bill McGrath to come in and speak with them about any issues that they may be experiencing within their size of organizations. And on my Board of Directors, I have Mark Pennybacher from Party Light Worldwide, and he's been an advocate for us in this Industrial Site Manager Forum. And they started talking at the last industrial meeting about how the city has been instrumental in helping them to maintain their facilities here in Batavia. And representing Party Light Worldwide today, we have Mark Pennybacher and Mark Rogowski here to speak with you about their participation, what they have learned with dealing from the city of Batavia and how it's been able to facilitate them keeping their facilities here. And I know that they also would like to bring Bill McGrath up if he is willing to come and speak on behalf of the city side of this project as well.
Sure, just briefly, you know, the council, we have talked about this actually at length because certainly it's your act, but I just wanted to say just a couple of things. You know, a lot of times we talk lately about incentives and sometimes they're spoken about as if it's some kind of a dirty word. And part of that is because the incentives we offer, it may take a long time to see whether they're, whether the business is successful, whether there's the payback, whether it brings in the jobs, et cetera, et cetera, that we want. And the, one of the nice things about our Party Light situation is that the incentive has, has an immediate payoff, if you will, for the city of Batavia and for Party Light. And again, I just wanted to remind you without going into details that this incentive is in fact that, it's an incentive to produce more. Party Light is our second-largest electric user, so you know how important that is to the entire community, but this incentive with the formal agreement will be coming to you soon, is actually for additional use of electric power from the city. So, I think everybody wins, but I think it was appreciated, I really appreciate that Mark wanted to come and speak to you personally about the impacts of the incentive. So, with that, guys.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Holly. We very much appreciate the opportunity to meet with you. When we went through this whole process, one of the things that I asked Bill is to have an opportunity to simply say thank you for your support. Let me give you a little bit of a background. About, let's see, it'd be two thousand and twelve, the business made the decision to consolidate our distribution center that we had been managing in Carroll Stream to Batavia. So, in two thousand and twelve, we brought ninety full-time jobs, including our Director of Finance, Mark Rogowski, who is also a Batavia resident, I might add. Keep you two separated, though. So, we brought those jobs to Batavia and we're pleased to be honored with an Ole Award as a result of that. This time last year, unfortunately, we were informed by the business that we have two manufacturing facilities, one in Cumbria, England, and the other one in Batavia, Illinois. One of the facilities would close and the other facility would absorb all of the worldwide volume. It's important to note that the Batavia facility represented forty percent of the worldwide volume, the England facility represented sixty percent of the worldwide volume. Shortly after being notified of that, I reached out to my good friend, Bill, and asked for any support that we could receive. We're fighting for a hundred and seventy families that earn their living in Batavia, many of which, like Mark, reside in Batavia. In addition to the hundred and seventy full-time positions that are anything from production worker through engineering positions, we employ seasonal support in the neighborhood of between fifty and a hundred additional people. This was a difficult challenge because we knew that one of the facilities would close. I've always been a firm believer that when you're in a us-versus-them winner-take-all scenario, it's better to win, and we did. At the same time, I have to tell you that this is a bit of a hollow victory because there's a hundred and thirty families that were making their living, making candles in Cumbria, England, that unfortunately were on the short end of this particular situation. Bill mentioned incentives. Within sixty days of the announcement that Batavia would be the worldwide center of excellence for manufacturing and distribution operations, within sixty days, we doubled our throughput. We will add another fifty percent on top of that by the time we get to October of this year. We currently have six ocean-going containers steaming across the Atlantic Ocean with equipment that has been disassembled from the facility in Cumbria, England, making their way to Batavia, Illinois. All of that equipment will be installed and in production by the time we get to August of this year. The city of Batavia was very helpful on a number of levels, not only the support that you were able to give us with the incentive that Bill was describing, but also being able to put us in touch with the proper people with the state of Illinois to also ask for support. At the end of the day, not only were we able to save a hundred and seventy jobs that work here in Batavia, but we were also able to preserve a hundred and seventy manufacturing jobs in the United States of America, which means an awful lot to me personally. So, again, I want to thank you for your support, all the help, and I can assure you that Mark did most of the heavy lifting. And again, once again, we want to say thank you and we much, very much appreciate it. Thank you.
We'd like to, you know, I'd just like, on behalf of the city council, to say we're very honored to have this decision made in our favor. And certainly, you know, you guys have been with us for a while and have been a good corporate citizen in our community and as one who, you know, if we've had any issues, we've always been able to work them out real quick with you and the satisfaction, I think, of everybody involved and we appreciate the corporate spirit that you bring and the community spirit that you bring. And we certainly hope that this signals not only the continuation of what you have, but more of what you've got coming to our community as far as more activity and more production and more jobs. And we wish you the very best and thank you for your reinvestment and your continued support of Batavia and hopefully this is a partnership that will go on for, you know, many decades to come. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving then to item number thirteen, which is approval to reject the low bid from Almus Landscaping Group for the two thousand and fifteen West Side Property Maintenance Project. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a rejection of a low bid, or the lowest bid that we got on the West Side Property Maintenance. I think we all discussed this at the committee of the whole. Does anybody have any questions on that? If not, I'll make the motion that we reject the low bid from Alanis Landscape Group for the two thousand and fifteen West Side Property Maintenance Project.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, Second Ballotman O'Brien for the rejection of the Almus Landscaping Project for the West Side Maintenance Project. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no-no's, one absent. Moving to fourteen, which is Resolution fifteen dash thirty-five dash R, authorizing execution of a one-year renewable contract for West Side Property Maintenance with Classic Landscaping Limited for the amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is for the West Side Property Maintenance, which this year will also include the cemetery, majority of the cemetery. It allows us to not purchase a new piece of equipment for that. So, if there are any questions on it, I would make the motion that we approve Resolution fifteen dash thirty-five dash R in an amount not to exceed fifty-four, nine hundred and ten dollars for the West Side Property Maintenance with Classic Landscape Limited.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, Second Ballotman O'Brien for the approval of Resolution fifteen dash thirty-five dash R, the one-year renewable contract for West Side Property Maintenance with Classic Landscape. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion to reject the bid is approved, thirteen yes, no-no's, one absent. Moving to sixteen, which is Resolution fifteen dash forty dash R, authorizing purchase of a forty-foot aerial bucket truck for the electrical department. Alderman Clark?
Yes, thank you. There were three bids, Tarex was the second lowest bidder that met all the specifications. So, I will make a motion that we approve Resolution fifteen forty R, authorizing the purchase of a new two thousand and fifteen Ford F-550 Tarex High Ranger forty-foot articulating telescoping aerial bucket truck.
Second.
For the net amount of one twenty-eight, two seventy-eight.
Second. Moved by Alderman Clark, Second Ballotman O'Brien for the purchase, authorizing the purchase of the forty-foot aerial bucket truck for the electrical department. Any discussion on that? Kirk, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Bodderman?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no-no's, one absent. Okay, the administrators report, item seventeen, Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor. We're gonna be heading into interviews for the proposed HR director in the next two to three weeks. We're working with an HR director from another municipality to assist us. We will be bringing the TIF financing plan to committee next week so you can see what our recommendations are in terms of dealing with Houston Street in the next couple of years. We're working on potential TIF development in the downtown. We'll be applying for another Kane County Riverboat Grant again this year. The applications were just put out to everybody. I put out a, another draft of the brochure that you wanted to do for public meetings to you just late this afternoon. If you can get me some comments, we'll try and have another draft out for the next meeting. We met today with Comcast on the cable franchise and I think we'll have something in the committee in the next three to four weeks. Our electric is drafting a letter to our Colonial Village residents regarding the electric system upgrades at your direction from our last meeting. We are working on the wastewater treatment plant rehab and improvement project and should have an update for you again at the next committee meeting. Our auditors are here this week, our audit is due by June first, so they're diligently working away, going through records. I want to thank you all, for those of you who are able to get away and attend the upcoming drive down to Springfield with Metro West. I think our city has the, if not the largest, well, I'm sure we have the largest number and the largest percentage of any city council in the group, so I think that'll be very important for us. We have a number of initiatives to try and speak to legislators about. And lastly, the, it's time for spring cleaning and advanced disposal now is picking up landscape waste. Uh, you just need to put a sticker on a landscape bag and put it out in front of your home on your normal, uh, garbage day, and they'll haul it away for you. Brush pickup, uh, does not start until May. The first brush pickup will be on the east side on May 11th, and on the west side on May 18th. The complete schedule is, uh, on the website, and we'll be talking about that as we go, we go through it. Uh, we appreciate if people don't start putting, uh, huge amounts of brush on the parkways well in advance of that, because it starts killing off the, uh, parkways. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions, the Administrator?
Thank you.
Okay, Committee reports, uh, Public, uh, Community Development, Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. No report tonight, uh, couple of meetings to announce. The Committee of the Whole meeting for tomorrow night has been canceled, and the next Committee of the Whole meeting that is scheduled is gonna be for April 21st, I'm sorry, April 14th at 7:30 PM. We have no items on the agenda at this time for CDC that I know of. Historic Preservation is scheduled to meet this coming Monday, April 13th at 5:30, and Plan Commission is scheduled to meet April 15th at 7:30. That's all I have.
Okay, Public Utilities, Alderman Clark.
Uh, looking at the calendar, I don't see anything listed for Public Utilities, so I have nothing to report.
City Services, Alderman Wolf.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I think the only thing we might have is the Geotech Testing Services on the 14th, and then, uh, also wanna remind everybody that the brush collection will start in May, um, on the east side on the 11th, and on the west side on the 18th.
Alderman McFadden, do you have anything under the Space Services?
Um, just a couple of things. On the, uh, April 14th, Cal will be reviewing the, uh, the meeting brochure, uh, discussion on additional liquor licenses, and, uh, looks like discussion on the downtown survey. And as, uh, Mr. McGrath mentioned, uh, we've got a, an outstanding group attending the Legislative Drive Down later this month. We'll have seven alderpeople, plus Mr. McGrath, and the mayor attending, so we'll have strong Other than that, uh, I think that's all I've got.
Okay. Other business, does anybody have anything else they wanna bring up?
Please vote tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, I wanna do that. Uh, moving to the Mayor's Report, uh, I'm gonna keep it real short tonight, but I just wanna share with you, obviously, on, uh, Sunday, May 3rd, is going to be the annual Loyalty Day Parade, and we like to get as many members of the Council as we can to walk in that parade. Uh, and if you're available, I really wouldn't ask that you consider doing that. It's, uh, about an hour and a half experience. You get to see a lot of the people in Batavia, speaks well for the community, City Council's commitment to the town, and certainly supports the good efforts of the VFW, so, I'm always there in it, walking, so I don't like to be out there by myself, so if some of the rest of you come with me, I'd appreciate that, 'cause it looks kinda strange if I'm out there. I've never have, but it's, sometimes we've, we've diminished the group and I'm out there pretty, with just a few of you, and the more we can, and if you wanna bring a spouse or a girlfriend, or a significant other, or whatever you got, you're welcome to do that too. And, uh, so, just to keep that date in mind. The next night on the 4th, which is the first meeting of our City Council in May, uh, hopefully I'm gonna be in a position to give you some type of report about, uh, some things we'd like to do on the, in the following month, on June 14th, which is National Flag Day. And, we have some interesting things happening in that regard, because, uh, National Flag Day was, to large degree, heralded and created 99 years ago by Dr. Bernard J. Segrand, who at the time was a resident of Batavia and lived down on South Batavia Avenue. And so, we're at the 99th year, but next year's the 100th anniversary of it. And we're trying to come up with some things that we can kinda, really kinda promote that idea, that, uh, we would be one of the places in the United States of America that will be the home of National Flag Day on its 100th birthday. So I think that could be a rare opportunity for the community to do something special, but we're gonna try to kick off the whole idea with a year-long celebration, starting on this year's, and this year it's on a Sunday, and right now, we're kicking around the idea of having some type of a program down at the West Batavia Cemetery, which isn't very far away from Dr. Segrand's home, and, uh, then maybe moving it, something down here to this area, and perhaps having the community band do a little band concert in the early evening, and then the fireworks committee do some type of a fundraiser, like an ice cream social, or something as part of it. So, that's just kind of a kickoff thing, but we've kinda got some other ideas of stuff that we may wanna do, and I don't know what all we're gonna do yet, but, uh, hopefully on, by the 4th of, of, uh, May, we're gonna be in a position to tell you a little bit more about it. So, uh, if you plan your calendars for the summer, if you're not doing anything on Sunday, April, or, excuse me, Sunday, June 14th, which is the second Sunday of the month, that could be kind of a fun day in town, so just put that in the back of your head. The other thing I just wanna mention, uh, is we all are anticipating, we're gonna have some construction down here this year on Houston Street, and so that seems to be a situation where others who have, now have annual events down here, Windmill City Days, uh, Art in Your Eye, other folks are having to kinda work around that. I guess Windmill City Days, we're thinking, not we, but the Park District is thinking of moving that out to Anxstrom Park for a year. I'm not sure I'm hearing real great things about that from some of the neighbors, that they're not really excited about the idea. But, I think if it, if it is moved, it'll hopefully will only be for a one-year experience. But the one thing I will tell you, and I think we've talked about this at Committee, I have certainly indicated that I would be certainly supportive if some of these other activities wanted to move themselves into downtown, and if they can't get themselves right out front here, that we would be willing to talk about shutting down South Water Street from Wilson down to First, which is where we used to have the Farmer's Market, and allowing that to be used as staging areas for some of these events, to keep these things kind of in the downtown area, and put it in proximity to the Bridge and River Street, and kinda keep the activity centrally located. So, I mean, certain things like the fireworks program, we have to move that out to the high school, 'cause we really don't, from a procedural and safety pers- perspective, we have to keep that in the, in, in an area where it's an open space. But, uh, some of these other things, I really would like to hopefully keep them in the downtown. So, just so you know what we're talking about, so. No other business, Alderman Brown?
Uh, Your Honor, I just didn't wanna steal your thunder, I just wanted to say again to, to the residents, though, for tomorrow, please vote. I mean, it's an important thing, uh, it's, it's not only a right, it's an obligation,